All right, I'd like to call the meeting to order. Tonight is Wednesday, October 11th, 2023. This is the October regular board meeting for the School District of Waukesha Board of Education. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Ms. Ettinger, would you please take the roll call?
Mark Burowski.
Here.
Betty Koenig.
Here.
Kerry Kuzlowski.
Here.
Markwell Moore.
Here.
Diane Voight.
Here.
Patrick McCaffrey.
Here.
Anthony Zenobia.
Here.
David Wad.
Here.
Kelly Piasik.
Here. Welcome, everyone. All right, we'll jump right in. We don't have bright lights tonight, but we do have some really exciting recognitions. So we're going to start with Mrs. Thiede, who will introduce our staff recognition tonight.
Hi, good evening, everyone. So I would like Mr. Chris Pallaway to stand and kind of head on up. So, Chris Pallaway, as you know, last month you approved him as the new Assistant Principal over at Waukesha West, so I'd like to give him a round of applause for that. So just as a reminder, he has been with the district as an instructional coach since 2016, so you may have seen his face around. He has experience as an eighth grade math teacher as well. He's a genuine professional who will and probably already has built rapport and trust with students, teachers, and parents. His experience working with teachers and his experience with Avid will be an asset as he joins West's team as they continue to strive for excellence. So once again, I just wanted to introduce Chris and welcome him to this new position.
Welcome. Thank you for being here and welcome. And Dr. Seibert has some recognitions for us tonight.
Yes, we do, Dr. Piasik, and we're very grateful to be able to do this as a school district. We have four businesses here this evening that we want to recognize for their incredible partnership. We nominated each of these businesses through the Wisconsin Association of School Boards Business Honor Roll, so your names are all prominently displayed on their website. And when I call your name, what I'd like you to do is come up to the podium. I'll read the submission that we wrote about you, we'll say some other nice things about your partnership, and we just really truly want you to know that we can't do this alone, and so having strong partners like you makes us that much more successful. So, thank you so much for joining us. We are going to start tonight with Metal Tech International. And here from Metal Tech, we have Susan Stephanas, the Human Resources Director, and we have Carl Nyland, who is the Machining and Training Supervisor. So, welcome Carl and Susan. When we wrote our piece for you, we said Metal Tech International, located in Waukesha, is a metal casting manufacturing company specializing in high-temperature, severe wear, and harsh corrosive environments. They are generous financial supporters of the School District of Waukesha as it relates to technical education and trades programming. They understand that the future of their workforce is contained within our local schools, and they invest in equipment and opportunities to clearly demonstrate that. We appreciate their generosity and engagement as we work together to provide the future of the workforce here in Waukesha. So, that's what we wrote to recognize you. And then, in talking to people who are part of MAID, such as Molly, we know that you are one of the founding members of the MAID Partnership, and you consistently support our tech ed programs annually, along with the scholarship funding that you provide. You open your doors to our students, families, and educators, and that's helping change the mindset around manufacturing careers here in Waukesha. So, we just want to say congratulations. We want to thank you so very much for your partnership, and Dr. Piasik will present you with your award, and we'd certainly welcome you to make any comments you'd like as well.
I'm the talkier one. So, thank you very much. We really appreciate it and appreciate this acknowledgement, and it is our intent to continue to support Waukesha School District, and thank you for all your work in releasing fine students to us to be able to continue our employment and for many years to come.
Outstanding.
Yeah, it's been nice working with people to bring more visibility and understanding that a career in the trades is a solid choice to make with your life, to have a job that's going to pay for your family for the rest of your life, and an opportunity to learn skills that can be used in other aspects in their life. I think for years, there's been a push away from tech ed, you know, shop classes and things being reduced and minimized or completely eliminated. It's nice to see people coming around and see that that is a viable option. The only way we can grow our economy and build things here versus, you know, a new word called reshoring, bringing stuff back and making it here, is if we have people that can make it. There's been a huge gap in that, and it's starting to come around, seeing hiring guys that did dual enrollment during high school, or that came through and talked to people and took classes at WCTC and other technical colleges. It's huge, and there's hundreds of employers out there looking for them, and I think that's what people have to understand, is that not everybody is set to go to college and do all that kind of stuff. Going through and getting a technical degree and building a manufacturing base in our country is what we do here in the Midwest, so it's good to see people coming around and things starting to change.
You bet. Well, thank you both. Next, we are going to recognize Prolec GE Waukesha, formerly known as SPX, and here to represent Prolec GE Waukesha is Meredith Johnson. Welcome, Meredith. Meredith is the Manufacturing Engineer Leader at Prolec GE. And Meredith, what we wrote about your wonderful company is that Prolec GE, formerly SPX here in Waukesha, is a major manufacturer of transformers, services, and components to allow for innovative and sustainable solutions for the delivery of electrical energy. They serve our students and staff at a high level, being major volunteers in our Manufacturing Automotive Design and Engineering MAID program, and our females in Manufacturing Automotive Design and Engineering FEMAID program. These programs exist in all three of our high schools, along with our Engineering and Health Academies at South High School. Prolec GE staffers spend an enormous amount of time in our high schools, talking with, guiding, and mentoring our students, and also assisting our teachers. And then, Meredith, we also said you guys have been a longtime member of the MAID Partnership. You consistently support our tech ed programs as well with annual scholarship funding. You have been the ones that have created the FEMAID Student Club, which we greatly appreciate, you and your counterpart, Ashley, to focus on empowering females to participate in non-traditional occupations through your mentorship. You volunteer at many of our student events, you host tours, you provide real-world projects, and you do just about anything that we would ever consider even asking, and you come up with tons of great ideas. So, we really want to thank you for your partnership, and we certainly want to have Dr. Piasik as well present you with a certificate, and anything you'd like to talk about, Meredith, we'd welcome.
Sure. Thank you so much for this award. Everybody on behalf of Prolec GE is very truly honored that you guys would even think of us for this, and I want to let you know that it is just as rewarding for us. So honestly, my favorite part of my job is that I get to give back to the students and give them those opportunities, and FEMAID has been such a blessing. Ashley and I are the first female engineering managers at our facility, and we are not going to be the last. So I'm excited that I get to work with all of the students and really kind of let them know all the opportunities that they have. So, thank you so much to all of you. We appreciate it, and we look forward to the years to come and all the great things that we can do. So, thank you so much.
That's wonderful. Thank you. All right, next, we are going to recognize Generac Power Systems. And here representing Generac, in the front row, we have Kelly Skindzaleski, who is the Manager of Community Programs, and Janika Sabotnik, Community Program Specialist, WEF Board Member, and Waukesha graduate. So, welcome to the podium, ladies. What we submitted on your behalf was that Generac Power Systems is an incredible support to the School District of Waukesha and the Waukesha Education Foundation. They are a major supporter of the Waukesha Education Foundation, which benefits our students and teachers. They have supported a number of projects in our schools and endorse our Classroom Connect Program with an annual donation of $7,500. They also recently received the Corporate Partner Award from the Waukesha Education Foundation for their incredible support of our school district. And, we also noted that while you're a newer member of the MAID Partnership, you jumped in headfirst, you have been nothing but wonderful in seeking opportunities to interact with our students and our educators at any grade level, and bringing us along in the development of our programming with your funding as well. Members of your organization volunteer at various events in our schools as a way to encourage STEM thinking and sharing the power of Generac. So, we're so grateful for your partnership, for your presence in Waukesha County and in the School District of Waukesha, and Dr. Piasik will also present you with a certificate, and we'd welcome any comments you have.
I mean, we just want to really thank you on behalf of all the employees. You know, education is really important for us. We know how that can impact someone for a lifetime, so we really take pride in investing and supporting our local schools. So we're happy to partner and continue to grow what we're doing in the schools.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you. And we are also excited this evening to recognize Educators Credit Union. Here representing Educators Credit Union is Victor Frasher, who is the Director of Community Engagement for Educators, and also a proud WEF Board Member. What we wrote, Victor, on behalf of your fine organization, was that Educators Credit Union is a great supporter of both the School District of Waukesha and the Waukesha Education Foundation. They are a major sponsor of the Waukesha Education Foundation, which directly supports our students and teachers with grants and scholarships. Educators Credit Union also supports our financial literacy instruction in our high school classrooms, and holds our Reality Day, the first one since the pandemic recently, for our business students from north, south, and west in partnership with our school district staff and Waukesha County Technical College. And we also wrote, Victor, that you're a longtime partner of the School District of Waukesha when it comes to personal financial literacy programming, which we greatly appreciate. You provide resources for our personal finance classes, and you've assisted with the Reality Day, as I talked about, that's been running for over 15 years, recently coming back, where students participate in a simulation where they take on the role of an adult with a full-time job, family, and financial obligations, and have to navigate a month of living costs while interacting with volunteer adults, such as Sue, who assist them on the journey. So, Victor, thank you, and thank your organization of Educators Credit Union so much for your partnership. Dr. Piasik will also present you with a certificate, and we'd welcome any comments that you might like to make.
Thank you very much for this humbling honor. Educators Credit Union was founded by a group of teachers some 85 years ago, so it's very fitting. I'd also like, if it's the Board's pleasure, to accept this on behalf of the late Christine R., who was a longtime educator here in the district, and she was also, many of you may not know this, was a board member of Educators Credit Union for many years. So it's very humbling to be with you all this evening. Look forward to seeing what we can do with financial education now that we're this close to being a law in the land for the state of Wisconsin. Hopefully, we'll be number 23 to pass that, so very excited to continue our work with the District of Waukesha. So, thank you.
Thank you, Victor. Well, thank you for joining us this evening. We really appreciate it. Thank you, Dr. Piasik, for presenting the awards. This is something we want to do on an annual basis, and we just, like I said earlier, we can't do it alone, and when we work together, we're that much stronger and that much better for our students and for our community in general. So, thank you so much.
Thank you all very much, and thank you for being here tonight, too. We appreciate that. I did miss one item on the agenda earlier, so just for good measure, Ms. Ettinger, can we please just verify that the meeting's been properly posted?
Yes, it has.
Thank you very much. All right, we are moving on to our report from our student representatives, and we have students from South High School with us tonight. We have Addison Berry and Ananya Srinivas. Welcome.
Hello, everyone. We are now going to present the Waukesha South Bright Lights presentation, and we'd just like to start by introducing ourselves. My name is Addison Berry, and at South, I am Public Relations for the Student Council. I'm involved in Art Club, GSA Diversity Club, Rock Climbing Club, Link Crew, and I'm also part of NHS. And in the future, I plan on attending a four-year university and majoring in biochemistry. I also plan on getting a master's degree in that field as well.
Hello, my name is Ananya Srinivas, and I'm a junior at Waukesha South. In the future, I plan to attend a four-year college and major in engineering and business. Some of the clubs that I'm a part of at Waukesha South include DECA, FBLA, and HOSA, which are all business and health-related clubs. I'm also a part of Mock Trial and Key Club, as well as Student Council, which helps me better serve my school community. Outside of school, I'm a part of Red Cross as a youth ambassador, which helps me serve my community outside of South, as well as being a part of various services and programs. Being a leader in these various situations, in and out of school, I have a kind proposal for the school board into adding a student representative on its board. I think a student representative would be a great addition to the board, as it would serve as communication between the students and the board. It would serve as representation on various issues and policies regarding students, and help promote better communication overall. In regards to the various things happening at South, we have Link Crew, which just welcomed -- oh, sorry. Link Crew would just welcomed freshmen to Waukesha South. Link Crew is an organization that partners upperclassmen with underclassmen, and it also helps to really ease the transition from middle school to high school with a lot of interactive and fun games in the start of the year.
Okay, so next, we'd like to congratulate Delaney Premu, who has been named a semifinalist in the 2024 National Merit Scholarship Program, as well as Reed Mueller, who has been named a commended student in the 2024 National Merit Scholarship Program.
We also have Peers for Peers, a student service program that helps to celebrate youth who live drug-free. We will be having a major event at the next South versus West football game.
Okay, so March Fest, we are celebrating our 33rd year of Waukesha South's band hosting March Fest, and each year, we host 15 to 18 high school bands, so that's around 1,300 to 1,500 students participating, and that's under the lights of the Ken Halib Stadium. March Fest is the second-largest marching band competition in the state. The stadium is usually filled to the capacity with band students, families, and friends. While this event is a marching competition, all proceeds from this fundraiser help support all the Waukesha South's band programs, including concert band, jazz band, solos, and ensembles. Waukesha South also honored its senior marching band members this night as well.
Mock Trial is another amazing program at Waukesha South. This past summer, they took third place overall at the Chicago Empire Competition, a nationwide competition. Senior Reed Mueller was named overall top attorney, and Carrie Duval was named a top-10 attorney in all of the U.S.
Okay, now, we would also like to congratulate our cross-country team in the Boys League. Waukesha South's boys take home Lake Country Lutheran Cross-Country Team Championship. And on the girls' team, Waukesha South's girls took second overall with a second-place overall finish by junior Sophia Antline.
Soccer is also doing really well at South. This past season, they are 205 in conference, and throughout September, they went without a single loss in their games.
Then, for volleyball, boys' volleyball is 5-0 in conference play and looking to take home the conference title.
Our cheer and collaboration team, this past month, the Waukesha South and West Cheer joined together for a halftime show during the football games.
And then, here's just a couple of images showing our black shirt pride. There's a couple of images from the freshman first day with Link Crew, and then a couple of images from March Fest, as well as some of the cheerleaders at South. And that's all for today. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Thanks, Leanne. Thank you. Any questions for our students tonight? I want to compliment you on your PowerPoint presentation. I don't know if that was something you guys did together, or if you had any help with that, but I thought the design and layout and everything was pretty impressive. Did you work together on that?
Yeah, we got some help with from Mr. Motto and other teachers, so thank you so much.
Spectacular. I think you've set a really high bar for the other high schools, so really well done.
Thank you.
Very well done. Any other questions?
Just a comment, you both are excellent speakers and very entertaining to listen to.
Thank you.
Very well done.
I do not know how to take this down from the screenplay, so.
Well, thank you very much for preparing this and for presenting to us tonight. Glad to have you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. All right, we are now at the part of our meeting where there's an opportunity for citizens to speak. We have four speakers tonight. We would remind our speakers that they will have up to five minutes to complete their comments. We will notify you at three minutes. We expect all speakers to honor our time limit, refrain from using any inappropriate language, and be respectful in their comments. Speakers who do not meet these expectations may be prohibited from speaking at future board or committee meetings. Speakers are here to address the board, not the audience. The school board does not endorse any comments made by members of the community here tonight. We would like to remind our community members of the impact of their words on others and that our children are watching. We commit to communicating with you in respectful and productive ways, and ask that you do the same. We also expect that the audience will be respectful of the speaker and of the board, and refrain from responding with verbal comments, cheering, applause, or other behavior that will detract from the meeting. Please note that no obstructions can be created between the board and the audience. Visual aids cannot be used, and the area behind the speaker and podium will be clear during public comment. Also, in order to respect our speakers and meeting participants, please silence your cell phone. Our first speaker this evening is Stephen Cogswell, followed by Paul Reese. Hi.
The parental rights resolution says things like, "Parents play a primary role as decision-makers in the student's educational experience." Talks about the fundamental rights of parents to be fully informed of their children's educational experience. Says parents can expect classrooms, district facilities, et cetera, to be free from political and ideological messaging. Says parents will be informed of any behavioral or safety events involving their children that may affect their child or that disrupts their child's educational environment. Parents shall maintain authority over decisions that directly impact the health and well-being of their child. This includes a parent's right to opt out their child of allowable lessons that may not align with the family's deeply-held beliefs. So, are Waukesha parents and the school board aware that the position of the school district is that these rules don't necessarily apply to school buses or school drivers? Are we aware that First Student, the company that we pay to drive our buses, will allow drivers to wear clothing inconsistent with their biological sex without notifying parents? Even special-needs buses, even elementary school buses? Even someone who's so obviously displaying their gender identity that a seven-year-old autistic child that's still learning to speak can independently identify that person as a boy wearing girls' clothes? The district transportation department, the deputy superintendent, and Waukesha branch of First Student all refused direct requests to notify parents of this policy, or of the individual substitute driving school buses around the district, in order that parents can either opt out, or just talk to their children about any ideological messaging they may get from seeing that on a day-to-day basis. First Student Waukesha even was dishonest to me about their dress code when I was asking them about it. Possibly even more concerning is that after I brought up this issue with the dress code, no one in Waukesha actually bothered to find out whether there was a dress code violation. They were simply saying things like, you know, "It's a sensitive issue, there's a bus shortage," but none of them even bothered to ask me what I saw, to ask what to -- it was really a hard -- had a hard time even finding out what the dress code was until I finally, this Monday, got in contact with someone at corporate in Ohio who took the time to actually identify -- to help me identify that and confirm that there have been dress code violations happening, and that this bus driver has intentionally broken their dress code in multiple ways, multiple days, in ways that specifically result in more fully displaying their gender identity to the children on the bus. So specifically, removing the required vest, displaying a full dress down to the ground with breast lumps, big hoop earrings, and someone that, like I said, a small child can identify as a man. But specifically, special-needs children ride a bus as part of their individualized education plan. They learn independence from it. It's literally part of their education experience. It's in the IEPs specifically, which this resolution claims to put in the authority of parents, not First Student Inc. So I just have several questions for school board, maybe parents, I hope, will be addressed, but do parents have the fundamental right to be fully informed of their children's educational experience on the school bus? Will the school district or First Student Waukesha notify parents that a bus driver repeatedly and consistently violated the dress code in order to express his gender identity to small special-needs children? Do parents play a primary role as decision-makers in students' educational experience on the school bus? Can parents expect the school bus to be free from political and ideological messaging? Do parents maintain authority over their child -- I'm sorry, do parents maintain authority over decisions that directly impact the health and well-being of their child when their autistic child rides the bus as part of their educational plan? Do parents have a right to opt their child out of allowable lessons that may not align with the family's deeply-held beliefs if certain students learn those lessons on the school bus? Will anyone at the school, at the bus company, or will anyone hold the bus company accountable to our values and our resolutions in our community, instead of their corporate policies out of Cincinnati, or their ownership in Europe? With top investors being companies like BlackRock, State Street, and Vanguard, that push left-wing progressive political agendas on companies they invest in? That's my main concern. It seems like no one's really holding school bus, school employees accountable to our values and our resolution, and it doesn't seem like anyone cares too much that's in -- people that I've been able to talk to to do anything about it. Thank you.
Thank you. I did just want to make one correction. We have five people who did sign up to speak tonight, I think I said four. Our next speaker is Paul Reese, followed by Eric Brooks.
Just like to say, God bless Israel and God bless the IDF. These are real difficult times we live in.
Mr. Reese, I'd like to ask that your comments are relevant.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah. All right. You said to me once, when you interrupt people, you give them their time back. I assume I'll get it back.
Carry on.
All right. I came, started coming here a long time ago, and right when they shut down White Rock, and soon after that, the focus became on Whittier, and we started talking about Whittier all the time. And it was a yearly update that they were doing, and the update went something like, "How much had it fallen?" And that we're going to focus on smaller class sizes. And that's what it went like year after year here. And they even stood up around 2017, '18, and said something, and said, "We keep talking about Whittier, and the only ideas we have are for smaller class sizes, and it doesn't seem to be doing anything." And it went on, and I guess we started doing some teaching, some student coaching, and it really, even a couple of times after that, they really had no solutions for it. They just would give a brief update, and it was pushed on. And there was really no focus or concentration on that school. And then this board switched, and something different happened, and they decided to take it from scratch. decided to take Whittier and move it into Hadfield and make a focus on this and put all of our resources in one spot. And against the dismay of the lying alliance of Waukesha, this was done. And they said that this would not work. And they criticized everything about what was this board was doing and everything, the, the tools that it was giving the, the administration was giving the school to do what it needed to do to, to succeed. And it's been working. His things have been changing there. It's been a different culture. And they've talked. I would urge anyone to go back and watch August Teaching and Learning Committee. I, I watched it again today, a little bit of it. And they said they, they now have a focus on three things: smaller class sizes, teacher coaching, and tutoring, which are great, and they are working and doing marvelous things. But what they're not talking about is classroom discipline. I know Markell's talked about this enough a number of times, is the classroom discipline. And smaller class sizes try to make up for lack of discipline in a classroom. When I was in high school, we had, my econ class, my favorite class in, in school was econ. It was a combined class. It was two classes in one. We had one teacher, and one would sit back and let the other one teach and did things. So you had one teacher basically teaching a combined classroom of, of students, probably 50 students in there. And it worked perfectly. It was great because everybody had to pass, it was also second semester, so if you didn't pass, you weren't graduating. So there was consequence there for your actions. They didn't have to hold you accountable because you held yourself accountable. So the disciplinary problems were not a problem in that room. And because the discipline was, was, people paid attention and you had to, everybody learned great in that class. It was a great class and my best experience throughout school. And so when we overlook classroom discipline, I, we overlook the biggest thing that we can control and, and the key to, to education and keeping these kids focused. My wife texts my daughter the other day, a couple, a week or two ago, about something, and my daughter texts Iraq right away. My wife's like, what are you doing? I'm going to the bathroom. Why do you have your phone? Well, I just needed this one time. And no, this isn't one time. And so we had a word with her. We, we dealt with that. But you can't lax up on these kids. They will take advantage every chance they get. We have new teachers. And new teachers aren't, they don't realize, they may not realize what we're trying to do as far as these disciplines. My daughter has a couple new teachers. And, you know, they, people complain about, oh, we lost some teachers. My daughter's new math teacher is her favorite teacher. She's never said to me before in her, in her career, she's in 11th grade, that she ever liked math. This was the first year she said she liked math. And looks forward to, I wanted to know what the, I wanted to know what the teacher taught next year so she could be in his class next year. And she'll be in 11th grade. She's in 10th. So anyways, we are going, it's not what we lost, it's who replaced what we lost that counts as well. And we've replaced some, had some good replacements. So anyways, again, I can't stress the focus on discipline. My, my daughters tried to pull a couple other things and being late to class, and that's not being exacted right. But anyways, thanks.
Thank you. Next up is Mr. Brooks, Eric Brooks, followed by Matt Schmidt. And I noticed we don't have audio on our timer, so we'll just remind you at three minutes and let you know. Thank you.
Yeah, I also wanted to talk about the successes that we're seeing at Hadfield. I think this is something that is worth celebrating. Obviously, it was a very contentious discussion when this conversation was first taking place. And I get it, you know, there are a lot of people who are parents, family members of children in Hadfield or Whittier who were very concerned about the direction, very concerned about the future that those schools are going to have. And that's totally understandable. We also had a lot of, you know, a couple loud voices in this community who wanted to make it a political issue rather than a practical one. And they just dismissed any possibility of the merger would be successful out of hand, said it would be inequitable, we'd be harming the most vulnerable children in our schools. And the result has been the exact opposite of that. I mean, we are seeing these kids get maybe the best education they've ever gotten in their young academic careers so far. And I think it's because of the bold leadership of this board, but also the incredible leaders that we have in that building. We have two outstanding principals, Principal Elliott, Principal Hart, who are from all accounts doing a tremendous job. They are not afraid to be different. They're not afraid to make mistakes. They're being creative. They're being innovative. They're trying out new strategies and new curriculum. And they're meeting kids where they're at. They're engaging the community. They're engaging the families. And the kids seem to be responding to that. And, and on top of that, you have tremendous teachers and support staff in the building who are buying into this, who are following that lead. And they're the ones who are tasked with operating the day-to-day operations, trying out those new curriculums, seeing what works, seeing what doesn't. And I, I just can't express my gratitude to them enough. I can't imagine how difficult it is to navigate kind of an uncharted, somewhat divisive merger. But those teachers have done a tremendous job. And, and I just, it, it, it's, it's incredible to see because I think Hadfield has for a long time been kind of the overlooked school in the district, Hadfield and Whittier. And, and now it's kind of become a leading light. And I hope that we see a lot of other elementary schools in the district look to them and, and try out those things and, and see what works, see what doesn't, and adopt them. Because the results, the early returns are incredibly positive. Instead of having two half-empty buildings, we have one building that's full and that's thriving. And I think it's just, it's very encouraging to see where, where Hadfield's going. And I hope that this continues. So thank you guys for your leadership and for making this happen.
Thank you. Next up is Matt Schmidt. Followed by Tariq Akmut.
Hello, and thank you. My name is Matthew Schmidt, and I have been a resident here since 2006. I have two children that attend Saratoga Middle School. A few weeks ago, my children showed me a picture of different clubs available at the school. The picture showed about 10 clubs ranging from gardening to esports. One of the clubs in particular was the GSA LGBTQ club. They told me that the clubs are student-run with a teacher in the classroom. I never received any email or letter from the school concerning this content. I emailed the principal and asked, what educational value does this club hold for students at school? And said, it seems like you're testing waters here, testing the waters here, having this club available to children. He emailed, he emailed back and said, this club has been at the, at this school for five to six years and is student-run and voluntary. And the teachers there are to oversee and for cohesion. He never said anything about the educational value for having this content in school. So I emailed the superintendent of Waukesha Schools, looking for an answer. And he said that this club exists in middle school and high schools and is for core instruction and student learning. Again, no educational value for having this type of content in our schools. I emailed them, both of them back with a picture of a trans flag that was in one of the classrooms in the closet, asking, when am I going to get an answer for why this type of club is at school? They never replied back. So here I am. Though my children are not in this club, my tax dollars should not be wasted on negatively brainwashing any child with this type of content. There are thousands of other topics that can replace, that can replace this with more positive value for our children. How many parents know that this type of content exists in our school? I certainly didn't receive any heads-up concerning this issue. This is indoctrination, not education. Thank you.
Thank you. Our last speaker tonight is Tariq Akmut. Is he here?
I'm still here. Good evening, members of the Waukesha Board of Education. As usual, I'm going to talk about diversity. But before I go there, you know, the Madison School District, like the Waukesha School District uses for a student as their busing company, and they've had similar issues. Actually, it doesn't matter what the busing company is, they all tend, they seem to have had issues with adequate number of drivers and getting people around. And sometimes kids have been dropped off at the wrong location and things like that that we have heard on the news, and this has happened nationwide. In Kokana, the school district uses Cubisson Bus, Bus Company for their student busing. And they came up with something innovative in order to recruit drivers. So they have young mothers who bring their baby onto the bus. They have the baby in a bus seat, and you know, the mother gets to, time to spend, and actually a stay-at-home dad could do the same thing. Stay, you know, do the busing, go back home, and then come back in the afternoon for their afternoon shift. And they think that it will make the busing of the students more safe because no parent wants to have their child in an accident, right? So that's what they have done there. So it's a, it's an innovative approach. You know, my, my thing about diversity is it is important, and because we all have, you know, we need to respect the views of others. Actually, you know, the pledge of allegiance and with the, with, with the words, with liberty and justice for all, it doesn't say for some, it says for all. And that's where we have to be inclusive rather than exclusive. And nations that don't include, let's say, women in the workforce on education, they suffer. And the same is true if we exclude people who are LGBTQ plus, or who are black or Hispanic, because we have done that in our country in the past. You know, Chinese laborers who built the railroad in the US connecting the east coast to the west coast, you know, they were treated poorly, just like we're Irish immigrants, or Polish immigrants, okay? And so, but some of those things change. So we have to, if we practice diversity, we bring the best out in everyone. So I hope that you will go more towards diversity than towards exclusion. Thank you. And I hope we have a wonderful school year here in the district.
Thank you. Thank you to all of our speakers tonight. All right, we are moving on to minute approval. We have a pretty hefty set of minutes to approve tonight. So we have September 13th public hearing, September 13th regular board meeting, September 13th executive session, and a September 26th executive session and expulsion panel. Ready? Ms. Kozlowski.
Motion to approve the minutes as presented.
I'll second.
Seconded by Mr. Browski. All right. Mrs. Eddinger, would you take the roll call, please?
Betty Koenig.
Aye.
Mark Browski.
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey.
Aye.
David Wad.
Aye.
Anthony Zanobia.
Aye.
Markwell Moore.
Aye.
Carrie Kozlowski.
Aye.
Diane Voight.
Aye.
Kelly Piasik.
Aye. Passes nine-zero. All right, moving on to our WEF report. Mr. Browski.
All right. Thank you, Mrs. President. So the WEF Board last met on October 5th, last Thursday. A couple of things to note that are important that are going on is the annual Elegant Farmer Pie Sale. Once again, it's going to take place October 26th to November 5th. And pickup delivery will take place on Thursday, November 16th at South High School from 5:00 to 6:30. And that's about a week before Thanksgiving, so good timing there. Everything's going to be online, so you'll receive an email if you order. 2022 grant winners. So these were the grant winners who had the 2022, 2023 school year to complete their projects. They are currently submitting grant reports so we can celebrate their successes and better understand the impact of their grant awards. Those reports are due by November 1st. And watch for social media and blogs for updates on those. As you probably know, the Casual for Cause has again kicked off, and it's been absolute great start, thanks to the hard work of Sue Eddinger, of course, and the superintendent's office. It's already raised over $11,000, which is just amazing. Many of the staff members have taken advantage of the opportunity to pay for the entire semester and are getting a chance to win a couple of great prizes. One is the Packer tickets. And as a Packer fan, that's a pretty great prize. But possibly better would be the one to have Dr. Seibert be the sub for the day for that teacher. So a couple of great prizes out there. So again, thanks to Sue and Dr. Seibert and all of the building secretaries who, who helped make this happen. Also, the Evening for Education, looking ahead to early part of, of next year. It's going to be on April 11th, 2024. So please mark your calendars for that. And a reminder that the WEF Award winners are recognized at this event, and nominations are now open. And again, as a reminder, the three award categories are the Corporate Partner Award, the Community Partner Award, and the Sally Jo McCalco Lifetime Excellence and Education Award. So again, if you want more information or to nominate someone via the very simple online form, you can do that at waukeshaeducationfoundation.org and just click the awards link. Also, wanted to mention that WEF is still seeking new board and new committee members. So again, if you have anyone interested, please let either myself or Lynette know. And speaking of board members, I just wanted to congratulate again really all the award winners tonight as far as their commitment to the district. In particular, Victor Fraser, he's of Educators Credit Union. He serves on the, the Waukesha Education Foundation Board. And Janika Svatnik with Genarak, she's on the board as well. I know Victor, he's, really both of them are just really great to work with. He's the golf chair, and his company was a sponsor. And that's kind of how he got connected before he served on the board. Janika, if memory serves, I hope it's accurate, that she started as an intern in the WEF office, and then, you know, now she's on the board, and her responsibilities just seem to continue to grow. She, it seemed like she's involved in everything. So I think they're both just great examples of people who can contribute to our district in a number of different ways. So congratulations to them. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. I, I can't move on without commenting, but I do know that Dr. Seibert did sub in an art classroom last year. What grade was it? Sixth grade?
It was, it was a mix of middle school. It was a mix of grades.
Yeah. And he had a smock and everything and
Oh, yeah.
lesson plans. And how did it go?
Tremendous.
Good.
It was great.
Your favorite class when you were younger, I heard, too.
Yeah, far from it. But yes, it was fun.
Appreciate you being willing to do that. And I think that is one of the best parts. So love that. Thank you, Mark. All right. So we are moving on to the consent agenda. Mr. Clark is actually away on district business, but will be late for the meeting. So Ms. Eddinger, I think, will report the gifts tonight.
We received four gifts this month. Summit View Elementary received two gifts: $500 from an anonymous donor to be used for art supplies, and $500 from residents of Summit Woods to be used towards the 4K playground. Waukesha West Girls Basketball received $2,000 from Sharon Bloom to be used for the purchase of new team uniforms. And Hadfield Elementary School received $2,600 from the Waukesha County Community Foundation to provide extra educational opportunities for their students.
Thank you. And thank you to everyone who made those donations to the district. Your agenda tonight includes various categories for approval. If any board member wishes to have an item set aside for separate consideration, you will have that opportunity in a moment. We'll start with the expulsion panel actions. Included in the items tonight for approval are the decisions of the expulsion panel, which met on September 26th, 2023. A confidential communication regarding the details of the expulsions was provided in your Friday packet along with the minutes included under item 1G. If any board member wishes to discuss this item, we have scheduled an executive session at the close of the regular meeting. Approval of the consent agenda confirms full board agreement with the expulsion panel's action. We also have included policies and bylaws. Policy 0142.1 Electoral Process, 0143.1 Public Expression of Board Members, 0144.3 Conflict of Interest, 1260 Incapacity of the Superintendent, and 8146 Notification of Educational Options. If any board member wishes to have an item set aside for separate consideration, please indicate so at this time. I saw Ms. Voight's hand first.
I would request that we pull the policy 0142.1 Electoral Process.
Mr. Wad, did you have an additional request?
That was
Same request?
Same request.
Okay, will do. All right, Mr. Browski, would you please present the consent agenda for approval?
All right. Yes, thank you, Mrs. President. So earlier this evening, the Human Resource and Compensation Committee approved four resignations and three new contracts. The information was provided in your packets. I move that the consent I move that the consent agenda be approved as presented.
Second.
I'm just gonna ask for a modification to that motion, the consent agenda be approved as presented with the exception of policy 142.1. Could I have a, that would be a motion for an amendment to that motion?
Second.
Thank you. Okay. Ms. Eddinger, would you take the roll call, please?
Anthony Zenobia.
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey.
Aye.
Kerry Kozlowski.
Aye.
Markell Moore.
Aye.
Mark Borowski.
Aye.
Diane Voight.
Aye.
Betty Koenig.
Aye.
David Wad.
Aye.
Kelly Piasik.
Aye, passes nine zero.
All right, Mrs. President, that concludes my report.
Thank you very much. All right, moving on to the superintendent's report. Dr. Seibert.
All right, thank you, Dr. Piasik. Just want to begin by thanking everyone for a great start to the school year, six weeks in as we reach the midpoint of October. I also want to again thank the businesses who we were fortunate to honor tonight in Metal Tech, Prolec GE, Waukesha, Generac, and Educators Credit Union. We certainly appreciate their partnership and that of many other local companies and organizations, and will look forward to continuing to partner with those we honor tonight and continuing to partner with additional community partners and honoring them into the future as well. I also wanted to let you know that the state forward exam results were released yesterday from last school year, the 2223 school year. We'll provide a much more in-depth look at that data at the November Teaching and Learning Committee meeting, but in a nutshell, we are continuously improving as a system in both reading and math and exceeding the state average in both of those areas due to multiple factors. But the biggest of those factors, I think, is the adults that we have in the school district of Waukesha, who despite their role or responsibility are in it for kids and commit daily to working very hard to meet the needs of our students, which we truly appreciate. And I also wanted to give you just a brief update on the busing and transportation front. We will begin serving three additional routes tomorrow, and will be also be adding two additional routes that will begin service on Monday, October 16th. So that will leave us with two open routes, down from 11 in the beginning of the school year. So in a six-week period, we, First Student's been able to cover nine, which is really impressive. And after we service those remaining two open routes, we can then begin to address the early and late routes in partnership with First Student, which we're excited to be approaching as well. So I just think overall, we have a lot to be proud of, and we have a lot to celebrate in the school district of Waukesha, and I just wanted to give you those few pieces this evening, and that concludes my report, Dr. Piasik.
Thank you very much. That's all very good news, and I do appreciate the ongoing effort that you and your team, along with First Student, have made to solve the transportation challenges. So I know that there's not a, a day and probably not very many hours that go by that it's not a top priority for the district, so thank you very much. All right, we'll be moving into our committee reports. Our first committee tonight is the Student Services Committee, presented by Mr. McCaffrey.
Thank you, Madam President. The Student Services Committee met Tuesday, October 3rd. We have no action items on the agenda this evening, but we do have two information and discussion items. The first information discussion item is the update on the Rural Behavioral Health Institute Suicide Risk Assessment. Mark Leonard, Director of Student Services, shared an update on the implementation of the RBHI Suicide Risk Assessment at East Alternative School. Jody Evenger-Benly, the school social worker and District AODA Coordinator, is our school champion. She has met for approximately 90 minutes with RBHI and merit for training. The first screening will take place on November 6th. School social workers from our other high schools will be in attendance for support and learning. The current enrollment of 70 students will be our starting point for parent opt-in, which will be sent electronically in both Spanish and English.
In the interest of giving Mr. McCaffrey a little voice break, does anybody have any questions or comments?
Thank you. I do. No, I don't either. Any questions? Excellent.
Okay.
Thank you. Our second information item was special education update. Hadesa Robinson, Director of Elementary Special Education, and Lisa Palin, Director of Secondary Special Education, presented on the different areas of disabilities and critical components of an individual education plan. Mrs. Robinson and Mrs. Palin will be meeting with each school's chairperson to determine root causes, resources currently available, and future needs. Also included in future work is a book study of causes and cures in the classroom. Any questions on that? All righty. The next Student Services Committee meeting will take place on Tuesday, November 7th, 2023, at 6 o'clock in the boardroom, and this concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. McCaffrey. All right, our next committee report is the Human Resources and Compensation Committee, presented by Mr. Borowski.
All right, thank you, Mrs. President. So earlier this evening, the HR and Conversation Committee met, and there were no action items but one discussion item, which was the review of the 2024-2025 School Calendar Draft. It will be brought back for approval at November's committee and board meetings, and as in years past, we've already obtained teacher feedback at the Superintendent's Advisory Committee for professional staff and for the Superintendent's Advisory Committee for parents. Several items just to note, kind of highlights, I guess, of the calendar, if you will. The all-important first day of school is going to be on Tuesday, September 3rd. Labor Day is actually on the 2nd of September, and school term may commence prior to Labor Day, but not before September 1st unless a waiver is granted. The early release days will be October 23rd, 2024, and then February 13th, May 23rd, and June 11th, 2025, for elementary and middle school. And in those days, students are released two hours early. The new teacher welcome days are August 19th and 20th, 2024. Professional development days for teachers are scheduled for August 21st and 22nd, 27th, 28th, and 29th of August, October 24th, January 2nd, 2025, and February 14th of 2025. And to note, January 20th is also Martin Luther King Jr. Day. Thanksgiving break's going to be November 27th through the 29th. Winter break's going to be December 23rd to January 1st of 2025, returning on Thursday, January 2nd. So a nice short two-day week on that week coming back. The second Monday off for families in January was moved to February, which is President's Day. And then spring break's going to be March 24th to March 28th. That's also aligned with some of the other area school districts. Last day of school, which we all love, is going to be on June 11th, 2025. And this is also going to be an early release day for elementary and middle school students, which we're doing for the first time in 2024. And then the last day of work for our teachers is going to be June 12th, 2025. Our next HR and Conversation Committee meeting is going to be Wednesday, November 11th at 6:15, or excuse me, November 8th at 6:15. And, Mrs. President, this concludes my report.
Thank you. Before we move on, were there any questions or comments about the calendar presentation? Just to, I want to acknowledge, I know that it's complicated, so I appreciate the time and effort that goes into that. I think the movement of the January, the second day in January is actually going to be good for a lot of families because that's a lot that happens right after the holidays. One other question. I think I also noted that there's four built-in snow days.
Yep.
And then if anything happened, if anything changes there, that affects the last day of school and everything shifts by one day. That's good.
That's correct.
It's an interesting calendar, the way things fall, because we start earlier and we end a little bit later than usual, but that's just the way the holidays fall, so a little extra time off in the middle. Okay. All right, thank you, Mr. Borowski. Actually, I do have one more question. When will the final schedule be? Will action be taken on that schedule?
In November. We're going to present at the committee meeting and then the board meeting.
You said that.
Yep.
Thank you.
Sure.
All right, the next committee to present is the Policy and Government Relations Committee, presented by Mr. Zenobia.
Thank you, Dr. Piasik. The Policy and Government Relations Committee met on October 9th at 7:00 p.m. here in the boardroom. The agenda included five policy revisions, which were approved at the committee and were included in the consent agenda this evening for those previously mentioned, and we will make a third action item on the policy 0142.1, the Electoral Process. So that would give us three action items for this evening, the first of which was policy 0175, Association Memberships. The committee reviewed policy 0175, discussed the benefits of district institutional memberships with WASBE, Wisconsin Association of School Boards, and SWSA, Southwestern Wisconsin Schools Alliance, and possibly overlapping the services of these two associations. The committee voted to renew the WASBE membership and not to renew the SWSA membership, and I so move.
Second.
Thank you. Any questions or discussion on this topic? We had a pretty lengthy one at the policy committee, but it was just a couple of days ago. Mrs. Voight.
I would like to ask to table the not supporting SWSA till next month, if possible, to try to give us a little bit more chance to review what, what that organization actually does for us, you know, just to do the first part and maybe just table the deciding not to participate at this point.
I think in order to table that, we would have to split this motion and then table the SWSA, so we probably would need an initial motion to split.
I so move.
Okay. Would anyone else be interested in dividing the motion? I'm not seeing support for that. I did provide some comment when we had the committee meeting on Monday night, just in terms of recommendation. I don't think there's anything barring us from reopening that conversation or listening to the SWSA leadership or re-engaging. I think we had some discussion about redundancy. I think my biggest concern is that we are overextended in our association memberships, and we're not getting the best benefit because we don't have the capacity to engage to the fullest extent that we can make it productive. Had the opportunity to attend the WASB Region 11 meeting last night, I did think that that was helpful just to engage with other districts in the region and, but it can only go so far. There's nine of us, so I think the thing that I like about WASB is that we all have an opportunity to engage in different learning opportunities and things. I think that was maybe the primary limitation with SWSA is that we don't always have the benefit to engage the full board, and that may be redundant, but I'm not trying to justify one way or the other, but I'm not seeing the support to divide the motion. So unfortunately, I think it carries with a second. Is there any, yes, Mrs. Voight?
I guess I'd like to apologize to the board that I've not adequately communicated the benefits of SWSA membership after, you know, I was the representative to that organization. And Dr. Seibert and I attended the virtual meeting yesterday morning at 7:30, and along with about 30 other superintendents and school board members. I really feel that that organization does give us a unique opportunity to have a lobbying voice in Madison that isn't possible through WASBE, and I think that's the big thing. We, we, through WASBE, have a school board representation. At SWSA, we actually have one superintendent and one school board rep from each of the close to 30, you know, school districts in this area. And I feel that most meetings have about 30 people present, you know, in, depending on the topic. If it's budget time, a lot of times we'll have the chief financial officers there as well to be able to take advantage of the discussion that's going on. A lot of the topics that they cover are ones that are of common interest to all of the school districts in the southeastern Wisconsin. You know, we recently have had an extensive discussion about the idea of the teacher shortages, teacher turnover, and, you know, we had the opportunity to actually hear the people that did the report this summer from the Wisconsin Policy Forum, you know, and understand, take a closer look at the national and, you know, local trends. One of the things that they found in the report that's very important is the idea of growing your own teachers. And one of the things that SWSA is working on is, is an initiative to grant licensure to locally grown, say, special ed aides that are able to work through that process and be able to get certified through that. Last year, they were, and they're still working very closely with the idea of retired new tenants and trying to make it possible for retired teachers to be able to come back to the classroom, retired administrators to come back to the schools because of the shortages that we're experiencing. So again, some very real topics that, you know, pertain to all of us. We have, the money that is invested in that organization, the $3,200, goes mostly to pay for the lobbyists, the two lobbyists that are hired by SWSA. And Raimi meets with us each month to be able to talk about, the report yesterday was everything from the financial literacy that was mentioned earlier tonight, that half-credit that's very close to making it through to law, the, everything from the administrative licensing to seclusion and restraint, anti-choking, you know, the literacy bill, Act 20, you know, just a variety of different kinds of topics and where the legislations at in each one of those situations. The policy, the, what we support and what we're all about is determined by the organization, by the representatives that attend. We spent half of our meeting time breaking, breaking out into work sessions. I was able to work with four different superintendents on the idea of what our core beliefs are, revising what they have been to what our core beliefs are going forward, you know, looking at our legislative initiatives for this next year as they change. So I really believe that there's a lot of merit to this joint opportunity monthly to meet and discuss legislative initiatives. With WASBE, we present the ideas at, in January, the things that we'd like to see legislatively. It's a one-shot, one-shot deal per se, and, you know, it's, it's not like the, every month you have a chance to really say, do we want to support this idea of this? Literally, SWSA is writing this bill about growing your own teachers. They're meeting with Senator Strobel to author it, you know. This is truly a grassroots kind of initiative that's going to help public education, and I just think it's an amazing kind of opportunity for us to be part of it.
Thank you for that, Mrs. Voight. I have, I just want to be clear that I don't think there's any failure on your part or Dr. Seibert's part to make the best of the opportunity that we had with SWSA. For me, it just comes back to capacity. And I, and I think there are some issues that we've had the opportunity to work directly with some of our representatives on that we might not have needed a third party, but that's my perspective on this. Any other comment? Ms. Zenobia.
Yeah, we, we had some good discussion on this the other, the other night. I, I would just again say, I don't feel any way that it was any representation that you'd given us there, Mrs. Voight. I was vocal last year in wanting to bow out of SWSA, and, and you weren't there, and so it wasn't a reflection on you last year for me. So I, I think this is a good move. I do think some of those services overlap, and a lot was discussed. And again, if the opportunity presents itself and the board wants to revisit it, we always can do that, so I just want to make some of those comments known.
Any other thoughts or comments? Mr. Wad?
Yeah, I just, I think I want to reiterate a couple of critical points that came up during the discussion in the policy committee. The first is just the redundancy. I have yet to hear of anything that is a specific SWSA initiative that has benefited the district that wouldn't have also been advocated for or the information provided to us through our association with WASBE. Now, as I mentioned, and Mr. Zenobia has also mentioned, we always have the opportunity to revisit it, and if SWSA would like to come and meet with, whether it's the board president or the board as a whole, or the policy, policy committee, whoever, and help us understand what value they bring that we don't get from WASBE already, I'm certainly open to hearing that. And I did clarify with Dr. Seibert at the policy committee that we can rejoin at any time should we see fit, but the redundancy. But the redundancy makes the investment, minimizes the investment. And I will also just say that hearing that virtually all of the money that we pay in dues goes to lobbying efforts is perhaps even more concerning to me. I don't know what they're lobbying on behalf of. I don't know whether those are initiatives that we or our taxpayers who are providing the funds for those lobbying efforts would agree with. And given that, I am even more convinced that the right decision, until we understand all of that better, is to withdraw from SWSA at this time.
Thank you. I did get an invitation from the Executive Director for SWSA that they would like to come and speak to us about their priorities are, and I think we could consider that. If there's anyone who feels strongly about doing that, we could talk about that now as well, or you could let me know. Any further discussion? All right, Ms. Ettinger, would you take the roll call on this action, please?
Markell Moore.
I'm staying.
Diane Voight. Betty Keenig.
Hi.
Anthony Zenobia.
Aye.
David Wad.
Aye.
Carrie Kozlowski.
Aye.
Mark Barowski.
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey.
Aye.
Kelly Piasik.
Aye. Passes eight, zero, one.
Our next action item was on new Policy 0164, which was meetings. It combines four existing policies into one. The committee approved this policy, 0164, and rescinded the following policies. 0164.1, which was regular meetings, 0164.2, which was special meetings, 0165.1, which is the notice of meetings, and 0165.2, change of regular meetings. And I so move.
Second. Thank you. I love the efficiency of this change, so it was kind of interesting that we had all these disconnected policies for something that could all go together, so bylaws, I should say. Any questions about what's in those various items or in the final one? Okay, we'll need a roll call for this. Ms. Ettinger.
Diane Voight.
Aye.
Betty Keenig.
Aye.
Mark Barowski.
Aye.
Carrie Kozlowski.
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey.
Aye.
David Wad.
Aye.
Markell Moore.
Aye.
Anthony Zenobia.
Aye.
Kelly Piasik.
Aye. Passes nine, zero.
Our third action item, then, would be the Policy 0142.1, which was on the electoral process, which was pulled from this evening's consent agenda. We had done a number of revisions on it in, in the committee, which were presented mostly by Ms. Voight, and we accepted those changes. I think it cleaned up the policy, added information to it, and that's, it was good work by the committee.
So, Mrs. Voight, you were the first to ask to pull this out.
Right. I had hoped to have a photocopy of the changes before you, but what I'd like to do is to just give you a little bit of background. One of the main things we did at committee level was reorder what they had written from Neola. And then, in the spirit of the Policy Committee trying to reflect what actual practice is, and I believe that that's really been a really very positive part of our policy reviews so far, this one only talked about filing a declaration of candidacy to be eligible to run for school board. And after having just run recently, and many of you have also done that in the recent past, there's so much more to it than just the declaration of candidacy. And we, I, we talked about adding the idea that we, you know, also have to file a campaign registration statement before starting to raise money, circulating nomination papers for non-personal office, and requiring 100 to 200 signatures. You know, so someone who thinks they're going to, you know, just pick up a form and be able to go, it's not that easy, and the fact that you can't start till December 1st, and all these kinds of state statute expectations that go along with it. So I shared with Sue, our election clerk, so change the terminology that this uses here. If it was going to go to the Board Clerk, it'd all be out you, David, having to deal with all of these questions, so I think you definitely might be referencing the election clerk instead. What Sue had wordsmithed, the variation on it is that, and this would be the change, then, I'd request for us to consider, "Any qualified electorate desiring election to the Board must file with the election clerk no later than 5:00 PM on the first Tuesday in January," colon, "one, a declaration of candidacy."
Point of order, Madam President.
It makes it very difficult, but she can make a verbal amendment. I'm just, I think you're still in discussion, though, or are you making?
I'm just telling, trying to read, like I said, I'd hope that there'd be a photocopy here, but obviously it wasn't made.
We do have some hard copies of what you had sent the administration.
Right, perfect, okay.
Okay.
To help as well, it was in our email late this afternoon as well, if anyone has access to that.
It was not in every Board Member's email.
Oh, it was not, okay.
Unfortunately, no.
Thank you for clarifying that.
Thank you. This is exactly what I was hoping to see, Dr. Seabird.
So my point of order, Madam President, is there is no motion on the floor. Do we have specific language that we are amending through this? Because I thought we had adopted specific language.
So, can I clarify a question? So when we pull something out of the consent agenda, it's still presented for action, but we've pulled it out so that we can discuss. If someone, so it still is an action item, but we are in discussion, so we would still take action on it unless someone's making any sort of other motion to take action on the particular policy. Does that make sense? So since Ms. Voight asked for it to be pulled from the consent agenda, she could initiate the discussion and potentially make an amendment.
Make the motion.
Yeah.
Now that everybody has in their hand the red section on the front side. Again, with her wordsmithing, I think it's easier to be able to see, like, a logical flow of the policy statement. Identifying the fact that the first day to circulate nomination papers is December 1, and all registration materials are provided by the district or are available from, as Mr. Wad had said, the Wisconsin Elections Commission, to make both of those resources available. The only other change is to add the legal references for those other statutes that pertain to this, and that's in red on the second page. Should I make the motion, or do?
Well, I'm not sure, so you're making, so you want to propose that this change gets made, but I'm not sure that we as a Board are, I mean, are, we're not entertaining recommendations to policy that are made by administration. So I don't believe that administration has made the recommendation to make the change. So you mentioned that Sue had wordsmithing. I think they were just editing it.
As the election clerk, what I tried to do is to reach out to her, again, in the spirit of, what are we really doing? You know, this is, have our policy reflect what's actually happening as far as the procedures that are required in this particular situation.
Okay.
Yeah, it was not, you know, it wasn't a recommendation, per se. It's just a matter of her. She took the Neola wording and just made it like the listing of, these are the things that are needed. I think, you know, just makes it an easier read.
And I, does anybody else have a question? I have a follow-up question, and what I want to ask is, there's some subtle issues with this, like, it's not good policy development to have requirements that say things like 100 to 200 signatures. There is a, there's a minimum requirement of what it takes to be, to be on the ballot, and those are very specific, and those are specific in the statutes as well as clarification by the Wisconsin Election Commission in terms of what has to be done for local candidate. So I have a little bit of concern with us being overly specific in, in a bylaw that's intended to reiterate what's in the regulation. Unless we were intending to give every specific instruction about what it takes to get onto the ballot, which I don't think is actually the responsibility of the Board bylaw. Mr. Wad?
Yeah, so I actually share your concerns, Madam President. I went back and forth, back and forth on this in the policy meeting, and after having given it some thought, I think it would be a mistake on our part to include that level of detail in our policy for a couple of reasons. One, should any of those statutes change, we would need to update them within our policy, and I think it would be simpler to simply refer potential candidates or those curious about our requirements for gaining ballot access to the Wisconsin Election Commission's website. The other thing that I will, that I will share as a recent candidate that kind of leads me in this direction as well is, and, Mrs. Voight, you called it out, there is so much more to running for school board than just filing a declaration of candidacy, and the best place for information on where all of the things are that a candidate needs to worry about, whether that's nomination papers, declaration of candidacy, campaign finance rules, timelines, filing dates, are all on the Wisconsin Election Commission website. And I would think that it would behoove us to point our potential candidates there from the very beginning. If the first place they go to look for information on our election process is our bylaws, which, or our policy manual, which perhaps there are people who do, I didn't, I can't speak for any other candidates here, but if they did, I would think we would want to point them to the place that has all the most current, thorough, and accurate information that we would need. And so I actually have an amendment that I would propose to this, that we can either substitute at this time, or we can allow this to come in and we can amend it. I'm not sure what the most efficient way to do it is, but if, if it would be appropriate, I would, I would offer my changes right now and submit the motion.
So if I could just defer back to Mrs. Voight, who was the first to request, would, and I haven't heard a formal motion other than the document in front, would you be open to discussing what Mr. Wad is considering, and then we could potentially take an action from there? Ms. Kozlowski.
I'd actually like to make a motion to move this back to committee for further discussion and approval before it comes to the full Board. I think there's too many moving pieces and recommendations that are going on. I do agree with Mr. Wad that the--
You made a motion. Can I?
Second.
Thank you. Now we can open for discussion.
The Wisconsin Election Commission is the regulatory body that manages all elections. The school board is not in charge of that. We comply with that, and so I agree with that. I just, there's been too many discussion items here today that I would just, I think we need to pause.
Yeah, so the question I have, then, is there anything statutorily that needs to be corrected in the policy since Neola sent it forward that would in any way conflict with state-level requirements or local requirements prior to some of the deadlines that we'll hit before the next policy committee?
No.
Okay, so the modifications are not substantive, they're?
They're more separating declaration of candidacy from non-candidacy.
None. Okay, thank you, Dr. Seabird. Mr. Wad?
Yeah, so if I'm not mistaken, our next policy meeting is not until December, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. I don't have an issue with this going, being tabled and being sent back to committee. The one thing I'd like to ask the clerk, if possible, because I'm not sure, do we, do we put any information on the district website that instructs potential candidates on processes or places for resources for running?
As I explained to Mrs. Voight, the paragraph that she had asked me for is pretty much what goes in our notification that we put in the newspaper every November. It lays all that out.
And do we provide--
And we do provide that on our website.
Do we provide a link to the Wisconsin Election Commission?
I don't think we have, but when anybody is ever called with interest, I will direct them to go to the Wisconsin Elections Board.
Sure. So the only reason I ask about that is because we won't be convening until some of the deadlines, or at least the starting point for a lot of these activities are scheduled to take place. So a couple of things that I, I think it would be helpful to point out, whether it's on our website or in the notice, or however we would do it. The first would be that, and I, and I understand your point, Dr. Piasik, about the statutory requirements around signatures, but the Wisconsin Election Commission does not, does not make it easy to identify for a potential candidate. They'd have to know what a second-class city is. They'd have to go and look up, is Waukesha or any of the villages a second-class city. I do think it would be beneficial to our potential candidates to know that they do need to collect a minimum of 100 signatures somewhere in our, in our announcement. And if we can do that, rather than having to rely on the policy to do it, I'm, I'm fine with referring it back to committee.
Whenever they come in for a packet to run for the office, I do explain to them in detail about the signatures. So they, they do know that, and it is in the posting. We could put a little blurb on the website also.
If I could just, for those that may be watching this discussion that may be considering running, I can't speak for everyone else in here, but I didn't request any of the forms specifically through the clerk's office, because it was clear, when I was doing my own research, I could just get them off the website, so, or off the WEC site. The one thing I think I needed to follow up on was, what are the number of signatures that are required? Because it wasn't obvious to me from reading what's in WEC or even in the statutes, so that's the only reason I'm suggesting we might want to include that as printed material in case people are doing all their research on the Internet and don't place a call or stop by the office to talk to you.
And we're still in the discussion process here, but I do think there are some, some items that could potentially be added that would assist in the purpose of this bylaw, which is to kind of describe the overall process, but not all the specifics of the process. So I do tend to agree with Ms. Kozlowski that it would probably be beneficial to go back to committee. You know, this, I think, pertains to how are we communicating and posting, and how are we making people aware that, you know, these are the, the general deadlines, this is what seats are open, you know, things like that. And I do think, you know, the one thing that we are required to officially have, that individual clerk who oversees those elections, just like we, we name some of our other contact individuals in certain policies, that might be something that's appropriate, and then if that position changes, we would just revise that policy, because it may be, you know, I hate to fill up certain individuals' inboxes, but it may just be easier to redirect them to the clerk over the election than to try to answer all of those questions in the policy. Because I do think it's really not helpful if we're too general, either. That's my opinion. Ms. Zenobia.
Yeah, I just wanted to, I think we covered a lot of this already, but part of the reason why the policy advanced to this point was we did have some administration feedback on what was in the policy. Ms. Voight had made the changes and brought them, they got a lot of discussion. So again, to your point, Dr. Piasik, we knew that there wasn't anything that we were adding that wasn't, that, that wanted to go along with, with statute, for instance. So we did discuss about adding too much, and so that's, that's how we got it here tonight. I don't see how us discussing this again in December on the 11th would, you know, deter or change anything for anyone running or wanting to run for office, even if that process begins for some people on December 1st. So the committee can take this up again, discuss these points. I think if discussion wanted to be generated on getting candidates or people watching out there a little bit more educated on what this process entails, I think we've certainly done that, so that's probably a good thing in a public-- done that, so that's probably a good thing in a public service, so. But that's kind of how we got to this point, and I would be fine with going back and, and giving it a little bit more work, so.
So the motion on, on the table is to send the policy back to committee for further consideration. So a vote of yes would send it back in December. A vote of no would potentially give us the opportunity to vote on the, the changes as proposed or consider an alternate amendment. So we do need to take roll call on the motion to send it back to committee.
Mark Borowski?
Aye.
Anthony Zenobia?
Aye.
Markell Moore?
Aye.
David Wadd?
Aye.
Kerry Kozlowski?
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey?
Aye.
Diane Voight?
Aye.
Betty Koenig?
Aye.
Kelly Piasik?
Aye.
Passes 9-0. You get to redo your assignment.
Excellent. We did have a discussion information item that was here on the agenda. It was the Neola update from July of 2023. It was volume 32, number 2. In addition to that, we did discuss a number of other policy items. Dr. Seabert shared a lot of legislative updates, that we had a lot of good discussion on those as well. So that would conclude my report for this evening. Our next meeting of the Policy and Government Relations Committee is on December 11th, I believe at 7:00 here in the boardroom. Thank you.
Any lingering questions about the policies or the legislative conversation at that committee? Mrs. Voight?
I was really impressed to see all of the 49 bills that we need to take a look at and how they've been distributed out through the different committees. I had a chance to look through, you know, all the, the bills that are in, in the hoppers from artificial intelligence to breastfeeding newborns. You know, there's so many different topics, and I think you've done a nice job of breaking them out towards the committees that would be most, most able to really dive into them and make the corrections, the changes that are necessary.
Thank you. Seems like that process is working so far.
Very much, yes. Yes, with 49 policies in that, that would take our committee a long time to process, but in this new model, we think it's in the hands of the people that know it best, as Mrs. Voight said, and it seems to be working very well. It's been a good change.
Good, thank you. All right, moving on, Finance and Facilities Committee presented by Mrs. Kozlowski.
Thank you, Madam President. The Finance and Facilities Committee met on October 9th. There was one action item for the approval of the 2023-2024 capital improvement projects. The projects under consideration include auditorium upgrades, HVAC improvements, and the replacement of the outdoor stadium bleachers at South High School. The committee approved the list of capital improvement projects totaling 9.15 million, and I so move.
Second.
Any questions about that proposal? I'm just going to make a comment, because I think it's really representative of strong collaboration between the board and the administration. The fact that we can move forward over $9 million in capital improvements without a request to our constituents for a referendum just reflects some really responsible behavior through COVID timeframe, proper use, I think, of our SRF funds, and the reasonable and right investment in some safety and security and building updates that are our responsibility. So I feel very good about that, and I appreciate the work that Mr. Clark and his team did to prioritize that list. Any other comments? All right, Ms. Eddinger, would you take the roll call, please?
Betty Koenig?
Aye.
Mark Borowski?
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey?
Aye.
David Wadd?
Aye.
Anthony Zenobia?
Aye.
Markell Moore?
Aye.
Kerry Kozlowski?
Aye.
Diane Voight?
Aye.
Kelly Piasik?
Aye. Passes 9-0. Ms. Kozlowski?
There were four discussion items. The first discussion item was a review of the remaining district long-term debt. The committee reviewed two possible defeasance scenarios, which would enable the district to secure enough funding to pay off the bonds related to the successful 2018 referendum in six or seven years versus the original 10-year amortization schedule. The final level of defeasance to be included in the 2023-2024 levy will be determined after, after the district's level of state equalization aid is certified on October 15th.
Any questions?
The second discussion item was a review of the district enrollment. The committee reviewed the results of the third Friday of September pupil count compared to last September's count. The district's resident count is down 335 students. The fiscal impact on the 2023-2024 budget is mitigated by two things. The early recognition of continued declining enrollment as we developed our budget assumptions, and the one-time declining enrollment exemption included in the revenue limit calculation. The true fiscal impact of this drop in enrollment will not be realized until the 2024-2025 budget cycle. The third discussion item was the 2023-2024 district budget. Since last month, the district has learned the amount of equalized assessed property valuation for the districts, the result of the September pupil count, and a range of possible options for the level of defeasance the school district could consider. As mentioned earlier, on October 15th, state aid and voucher program participation levels will be certified by the state of Wisconsin. This will allow for the calculation of the final tax levy and the completion of the 2023-2024 budget.
Maybe if I could just make a comment on that, I just want to remind all of the board members that we do not have another meeting before we have the meeting to actually meet and discuss that final budget proposal. So those scenarios that Mr. Clark and his team put together are really important. Obviously, there's some additional data that will be filling in some of those blanks here this week. So I would just encourage anyone who hasn't had the opportunity to really look through all of those in detail, ask questions sooner than later if you have them, reach out to Dr. Seabert or Mr. Clark if you need clarification on, on anything. They were kind enough to put together quite a few scenarios, and some of those scenarios are actually based on the previous discussion item, which were options as far as the defeasance of the original referendum debt. So please make sure you take a look at that before we meet on the 23rd to discuss the final budget proposal.
The final discussion item was the monthly budget report. Revenues and expenditures continue to be within budgeted limits for both the general and special education fund. The next Finance and Facilities meeting is scheduled for November 6, 2023, at 5:30 in the boardroom. And, Madam President, this concludes my report.
Thank you, Ms. Kozlowski. All right, our last committee tonight is the Teaching and Learning Committee, and it'll be presented by Mrs. Koenig.
Thank you, Madam President. The Teaching and Learning Committee met last week, Tuesday, October 3, 2023. One action item and four discussion items are on the agenda this evening. Tonight's action item is the approval of the core syllabus for AP US Government and Politics. The Board of Education approved the purchase of the text American Government: Stories of a Nation for the AP US Government and Politics course during our board meeting back in June. The core syllabus was created and presented to the TNL Committee in August for use in the course starting this September. It includes essential questions, enduring understandings, a course plan, and textbook modules that will be used in the course. Nathan Geblinger, social studies teacher at North, and Laura Ryan, Director of High School Teaching and Learning, provided an update for the first month of school using the new syllabus and resources. They also shared that the response has been very favorable by the teachers and students with regard to the usefulness and benefit of the new syllabus. On a vote of 5-0, the Teaching and Learning Committee approved the core syllabus for AP US Government and Politics as it was presented. The committee requests board approval, and so I so move to approve the core syllabus for AP US Government and Politics as presented.
Second.
Thank you. Any more questions about that? All right, Ms. Eddinger.
Kerry Kozlowski?
Aye.
David Wadd?
Aye.
Betty Koenig?
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey?
Aye.
Diane Voight?
Aye.
Mark Borowski?
Aye.
Anthony Zenobia?
Aye.
Markell Moore?
Aye.
Kelly Piasik?
Aye. Passes 9-0. Ms. Koenig.
Our first discussion item is the discussion on revisions to Board Policy 2340: Field Trips and Other District Sponsored Trips. After a discussion at the November Teaching and Learning Committee meeting, we have updated Board Policy 2340 to shift approval of most overnight field trips to the principal and the superintendent. The approvals would still be communicated to the board on a monthly basis. However, the following types of trips would still come to the Teaching and Learning Committee for approval. Any international travel as part of competition, trips to Hawaii or Alaska, and non-curricular trips, such as trips that are not aligned to specific coursework or competitions. This policy would be brought back to the November Teaching and Learning Committee meeting, meeting to seek approval.
Questions on that? Questions? Okay.
The second and third discussion items are presented together tonight, since they include high school social studies curricular resources for economics and US government and politics. As high school social studies proceeds through the curriculum design cycle, economics and US government and politics are seeking curricular resources to support the implementation of a guaranteed and viable curriculum. These courses are required for graduation, and currently there is no district support resource. The rationale for adoption, resources to be piloted, and process were shared by Corey Ross, social studies teacher at South, and Laura Ryan, Director of High School Teaching and Learning. Follow-up discussion for both pilots is planned for the committee meeting in January. This meeting, Ms. Ryan shared a link to the digital access, I'm sorry, this morning, Ms. Ryan shared a link to the digital access directions and logins for both TCI texts with all board members via email, and she has one hard copy of each of the textbooks in our office for our perusal. Board members who wish, or have any questions regarding the curricular resources used in the pilot should contact Laura Ryan. The fourth and last discussion item tonight is a discussion on the high school schedule. Since September of 2022, a team of district and building administrators, guidance counselors, coaches, coordinators, and teachers have been meeting monthly to review and discuss potential improvements to the current high school schedule. The team conducted a SWAT analysis, which stands for strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats, around our current schedule to determine if consideration of a new schedule was necessary. This involved reviewing system-level data around achievement, attendance, curriculum implementation, and student perception, and how these factors may correlate to the schedule. The team determined that exploring alternative schedules was advantageous. They established goals and explored several options, weighing pros and cons of each. Last week, the high school principals and teaching and learning departments proposed that the high school schedule transition to a four-period A-B block schedule, beginning in the 24-25 school year. Students would be guaranteed four 90-minute blocks per day, alternating on days A and B, for a total of eight classes each semester, and to ensure compliance with Wisconsin DPI instructional minutes. With this format, students will continue to participate in semester- and year-long classes. This proposal will be presented again at our November meeting for further discussion and possible action.
Are there any questions?
Madam President, that includes, concludes the Teaching and Learning Committee report. Our next meeting will be held on Tuesday, November 7, 2023, at 7:00 PM, following the Student Services meeting in the boardroom here at the Blair Administration Building. Thank you.
Thank you. Before I move on, were there any questions about the high school schedule, for anyone?
I did—
Mr. Moore?
Thank you. I did have some questions regarding that with some concerns, but I will follow up with the Teaching and Learning Chair and the rest of that committee as we go forth this week, because there are some concerns that I wanted to discuss with you all, but I'm looking forward to meeting with the Teaching and Learning Committee Chair again, as I stated, to discuss that specific concern with the high school schedule.
Okay. Thank you. That sounds good. All right, we are now to the portion of our agenda for other business. To begin with, are there any recommendations for future board or committee action or discussion items? Mr. Zenobia?
Yes, I would like to, I would like to have some discussion around some of the policies that govern our busing contracts that have recently come to light, so. I don't know what committee would take that up, but I think it deserves some discussion.
Would that be Student Services? Can you clarify what you mean?
Not, not the contract per se, but the policies that govern drivers, for instance, and how they may relate to students, so, while they're on the bus.
So that may be a combination of contractual details and Student Services? Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I understand what you're asking for. Thank you. Anything else? All right, seeing none, we do have a need for executive session tonight. We actually will need items, just item D? Item D? Just D.
I motion to adjourn to executive session pursuant to Wisconsin's, Wisconsin statutes 19.85, parent 1, parent E, for deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. Pupil transportation contract, North High School stormwater easement, and cell tower lease proposal.
Thank you.
Second.
Second in by Mrs. Koenig. All right, Ms. Eddinger, would you take the roll call, please?
Anthony Zenobia?
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey?
Aye.
Kerry Kozlowski?
Aye.
Markell Moore?
Aye.
Mark Borowski?
Aye.
Diane Voight?
Aye.
Betty Koenig?
Aye.
David Wadd?
Aye.
Kelly Piasik?
Aye. Passes 9-0. I believe that we're not going to be returning from executive session this evening. All right, our next meeting is here in the boardroom on Wednesday, November 8. Just as a reminder, we have a full committee schedule that week, so Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday, so we will see everyone back here on November 8, and meeting is adjourned. Thank you. Mrs. Moore?